Good morning. We're going to get started with our invocation led by Pastor Brian Gilbert of Brookwood Baptist Church. This will be followed by our Pledge of Allegiance led by Annie and Maisy Brocksmith of Girl Scouts Troop 418. Please stand.
Good morning and welcome. Thank you all for the invitation. I'm so grateful we live in a city and a state that still believes in prayer. Let's go to the Lord at this time. Almighty God, we thank you, God, that we can begin a beautiful Tuesday morning in prayer. Lord, what a privilege. God, I thank you for this great city. Father, I thank you just for the small history I remember of something that started with Mayor Norrick and continued with Mayor Humphries, Mayor Cornett, and now Mayor Holt. God, just rebuilding, beautifying this place. Lord, I'm grateful. And Father, I just know, though, that a mayor and all these councilmen and women and just people in a city and beautiful buildings won't make us successful. God, we need your help. So, Lord, I ask today that you would give wisdom to this council and this mayor and all our city officials. God, we pray your protection this day for all of our city officials, our police chief and all the policemen and fire chief and all the firemen and women and policewomen as well. And, God, we pray your protection over them. Father, I pray that we would not just be believers in you, but we would be followers. Lord, may we truly, as Psalms 119 says, "Make your word a lamp unto our feet, a light unto our path." God, that we would love you and love our neighbor as ourself. Father, thank you for all the blessings. Thank you for such a great salvation that you make available to us through the sacrifice of your Son and how he has overcome sin and death. And it's in the wonderful name of Jesus I pray. Amen. God bless.
Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you, Pastor. Thank you, Annie and Maisy. I call this meeting of the City Council to order. And we have one item on the listed agenda, Office of the Mayor, and then a couple of other items as well. So I will make my way to the front. Why don't we begin with Kara? Come on up. Kara, come over here, Kara. Kara is, by the way, the spouse of an Oklahoma City firefighter. Yeah. But more importantly today, she is our Teacher of the Month. And we are so grateful, Kara, for all that you do and that all our teachers do here in Oklahoma City. And to learn a little bit more about you, we would like to ask the clerk to read this resolution.
Has been named Teacher of the Month for February 2020 by the Edmond Public Schools and the Rotary Club of Oklahoma City. Whereas Kara received her Bachelor of Fine Arts in Education and a minor in Art History from the University of Central Oklahoma before teaching in Edmond Public Schools for six years. Kara was awarded the 2017 Oklahoma State Superintendent Exemplary Teacher Award. And whereas Kara serves as Head Girls Cross-Country and Track Coach at Edmond North High School, where in 2017 they were the cross-country academic state champions. Whereas Kara is dedicated to enthusiastic and dynamic teaching as a means of creating and nurturing a lifelong appreciation for the arts. Whereas Kara is a lifelong member of Girl Scouts of America and has earned the Bronze Award. Now therefore, be it resolved by the mayor and council of the city of Oklahoma City that they do hereby recognize and commend Kara Bowerman on her selection as February 2020 Teacher of the Month by the Edmond Public Schools and Rotary Club of Oklahoma City.
Well, very good. Yes. Let's hear it for Kara. A little bit of a Girl Scout crossover today as well. Well, this is a resolution, which means we need to pass it. So I would accept a motion. Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. That was a little bit of a cliffhanger there, Kara. What'd you like to say a few words?
Well, I don't know what much more I can add to this because that was pretty intense. But yeah, I've been teaching seven years. I'm at Edmond North High School. I've loved that school since I got hired there. So I've been there the whole time. And every day that I go in there, I just try to make it a fun experience, not just for my kids, but for me as well to teach. And so just trying to share that light has kept me motivated and passionate. So anyways, and stuff like this is pretty great, too. It makes me feel appreciated. So anyways, thank you very much.
Yes, absolutely. Let's hear it for Kara one more time. All right. When do we have our folks for OKC Black Restaurants Weeks come up? All right. Well, we are celebrating a fun new endeavor this month. And to learn a little bit more about it, I would ask the clerk to read this proclamation.
Whereas OKC Black Eats works to stimulate the local economy, especially in historically African-American neighborhoods, by encouraging local and visiting diners to frequent restaurants owned by African-Americans. And whereas Oklahoma City native Apollo Woods created OKC Black Eats to provide revenue-generating solutions for hospitality professionals and restaurateurs. And whereas, according to the U.S. Census Bureau Survey of Business Owners in 2007 and 2012, in the OKC metropolitan area, African-American-owned firms generate $463 million in sales. Whereas OKC Black Restaurant Weeks, known as #OKCBRW, is a citywide celebration of black culinaryians in the Oklahoma City metropolitan area. And whereas OKCBRW runs February 1 through the 29th in 2020 to give patrons an opportunity to experience hospitality, explore restaurants in different neighborhoods, and experience the best of Oklahoma City's African-American-owned restaurants without breaking the bank. And whereas all participating restaurants offer special OKCBRW menus for the selected service during all regular operating hours for the full length of the 29-day promotion period. Whereas in its efforts to expand economic development, OKCBRW aims to stimulate direct spending among participating restaurants at a goal of $220,000. Now therefore, David Holt, the mayor of the city of Oklahoma City, does hereby proclaim the month of February to be OKC Black Restaurant Weeks in Oklahoma City in order to highlight the African-American culinary and dining experiences in our city.
Well, very good. Well, Apollo, I know you put all this together, and we're very grateful. I would love it if you would say a few words and also introduce who you've brought here with you this morning.
Sure. I'll be brief because that was kind of long. I may have. Now I know proclamations, you're writing them a little shorter. But, you know, I'm a guy born and raised in Oklahoma. I'm that story that never thought after high school, you come back to Oklahoma. But I'm grateful to be back. We went to Houston with the Oklahoma City Chamber last fall. And I was asked, when I moved back to Houston, I said no, because this has been a place where, as an African-American, as a business owner, this is a place in Oklahoma City that's been receptive. And we believe that we can be very impactful to community. So who we have represented today are some of the members, of course, in the restaurant space, people have people to serve food from. So we have Chef Zaris, who is the owner of Oklahoma Soul Cafe, which is our newest restaurant that's here in Oklahoma City. We have Ray Brown, who is the co-owner of Ice Vin Center. And we have Mario, who is also from Elmer's Uptown in Grillo. And I'm just a guy.
We appreciate you. Did anybody else want to say anything?
Of course I do. I just want to say congratulations to you all and welcome aboard to our newest restaurant. And it's an honor. And I want to continue to speak about the bingo card. So you still have a couple weeks. And I've read a lot of the comments as far as people discovering new things and having date nights based on the bingo card. And that means something when you're able to rediscover your city and especially rediscover parts of the community that you probably never would have traveled before. And that means Northeast Oklahoma City to me. And that means Ward 7 to me. And I thank you for taking the time to be very intentional about the effort for African-Americans in their space and their restaurants. And thank you all for being intentional about opening restaurants in your community and being intentional about serving the people that you know and to serve great food. So if you ever need, anybody needs any tips on where to go, where to eat, let me know. I can help you. So thank you. And I appreciate you all again.
Thank you so much. And let's hear it one more time for OKC Black Restaurant Weeks. And that's yours to keep. Thank you, gentlemen. Paul? So words can't really express our gratitude to Paul Moore. And I hope everyone understands, and you certainly will after we read this proclamation, that we're in the presence of true artistic excellence this morning. I mean, this is pretty special to be here with Paul Moore this morning and to celebrate the completion of truly one of the most impressive and literally backbreaking works that this planet has ever seen. And over the course of two decades, you and your family have worked on the Land Run Monuments down on the end of our canal. And the work is now essentially complete. There's some things we want to do around the sculptures, but the sculptures are now all fully placed. And again, this has taken 20 years and millions of dollars, but most importantly, your blood, sweat, and tears and your family's hard work and support. And we wanted to honor you here this morning, Paul, because of all that. And just thank you again. Words can hardly do it justice, the feelings we have about you and this work. But we will attempt now to do as best we can. And so with that, I would ask the clerk to read this proclamation.
Whereas Paul Moore, a citizen of the Creek Muskegee Nation, was born in Oklahoma City. He and his wife Kim have raised two sons, Ryan and Todd. Whereas Paul is the artist-in-resident and professor of figurative sculpture at the University of Oklahoma in Norman, Oklahoma. Whereas Paul has sculpted more than 150 commissions for numerous governmental, corporate, private, and international collections. Whereas some of the well-known local sculptures that Paul has created include the Johnny Bench statue in Bricktown, the Seed Sour statue at the University of Oklahoma, and on the Chisholm Trail Monument in Duncan, Oklahoma. Whereas one of Paul's recently completed works of art is the Centennial Land Run Monument, commissioned by the city of Oklahoma City, the state of Oklahoma, and the United States of America to commemorate the land runs that are an important chapter in Oklahoma's history. Whereas completion of the Centennial Land Run Monument required the artistry and skill of Paul Moore and his sons, Ryan and Todd, who all worked together to create the massive project over a period of 20 years. Whereas this amazing group of 45 heroic-sized sculptures is one of the world's largest works of original, unique bronze sculptures by a single sculpture. Whereas the numerous contributions of Paul and his family to public art are a credit to our city and state. Now therefore, David Holt, the mayor of the city of Oklahoma City, does hereby proclaim February 18th as Paul Moore Day in Oklahoma City. And he encourages all residents and visitors to appreciate the work of Paul Moore and his family.
Let's hear it for Paul Moore. Now, Paul speaks with his hands, not with his mouth, he says. So he's going to defer any words. I didn't know if anyone else must say anything. But if not, I'll just again reiterate what your work has meant to this city. We're thrilled that it's finally complete. I hope you don't spend all of Paul Moore Day in Norman, by the way, because it's your day here in Oklahoma City. And again, we're just so grateful. Thank you so much, Paul. Let's all hear it for Paul Moore one more time. Thank you. All right. That concludes Office of the Mayor. One last thing before we move forward. Want to shout out to Ms. Carla Burton and the Star Spencer students. Is that you guys in the back? So yeah, yeah, raise your hands. You'll be here all morning, right? Well, very good. We're glad. All right, noted. Well, we're glad you're here. All right. We're going to move on now to the Journal of Council Proceedings. We have two items here. Items A and B we can take with one motion. Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Request for uncontested continuance is item five. Mr. City Manager.
Yes, sir. On item 9G1, Dilapidated Structures, this item will be stricken from the agenda. The item is X, or I'm sorry, is 9G1A, and it's 2004 North Cherry Avenue, and the owner is removed. Under item 9H1, Unsecured Structures, these will all be stricken as well. Item A, 6405 Ashby Terrace, the owner is secured. Item C, 5000 Briarwood Drive, the owner is secured. Item E, 2201 North Kate Avenue, the owner has secured. Item F, 2008 North Martin-Luther King Avenue, the owner is secured. Item J, 1731 Northwest 12th Street, the owner has secured. Item O, 628 Southwest 31st Street, the owner has secured. Item R, 231 Southeast 46th Street, the owner has secured. And item S, 733 Southwest 46th Street, the owner has secured. Under 9I1, on page 21, under Abandoned Buildings, these will all be stricken as well. Item A, 6405 Ashby Terrace, the owner is secured. Item C, 5000 Briarwood Drive, the owner is secured. Item E, 2004 North Cherry Avenue, the owner has removed. Item F, 2201 North Kate Avenue, the owner has secured. Item M, 628 Southwest 31st Street, the owner has secured. Item N, 231 Southeast 46th Street, the owner has secured. And item O, 733 Southwest 46th Street, the owner has secured. That's all the items that I have.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. This brings us to item six, Revocable Permits. I have to step out for item A, so I'll turn the gavel over to the Vice Mayor, Councilman Greiner.
This is a revocable right-of-way use permit with McNelly's Plaza Court to hold the McNelly St. Patrick's Day Block Party on March 17th. We have Brian. Brian, I'm not going to mispronounce your last name. I'll let you say it.
My name is Brian Pittman, 2740 Northwest 21st. I am with James McNelly's Public House. We are located at Tenth and Walker, right in the middle of Midtown, one of the original Midtown locations, actually, restaurants in the area. We are going to, looking to host our 12th Annual, actually, St. Patrick's Day Block Party, right next to the pub, or just north of 10th Street. And we're seeking your approval to be able to close down the Walker Avenue itself, just north of 10th, between that and 11th Street for our annual event.
All right. This is in Ward 6.
Well, it sounds like a great time. I know I always look out my window and see it happening. So I will move for approval.
Any discussion? No? Okay, cast your votes. Passed unanimously.
Thank you, everybody.
Moving on to the next one is a revocable right-of-way use permit with Red Bud Foundation to hold the Red Bud Classic.
I can take it from here if you like, Mr. Vice Mayor. We have Sarah Sweet here for this item.
Good morning, everyone. I'm the Race Director for the Red Bud Classic, which is a running and cycling event. We are holding our 38th Red Bud this April 4th and 5th. It's, we start at the Waterford Plaza on Northwest 63rd in Pennsylvania. And we, our cycling events go out to our neighbors in Jones and Choctaw, and also Nichols Hills, the city of Nichols Hills. And so we expect lots of runners and cyclists out on April 4th and 5th. We're just excited to be in tradition in Oklahoma City.
Great. Let's see. This is wards 2 and 7. Either one of you want to jump in?
Well, we're excited about Red Bud. So maybe this year, we can get our running shoes on, you think?
I use an elliptical because I cannot run on this poor right knee, but I'm so.
Challenge rejected. Go for it, councilperson.
Run solo. With that, I move for approval.
And I'll second it.
I've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Thank you. All right. We're going to recess the council meeting now and convene as the Oklahoma City Municipal Facilities Authority. We have items A through H here we could take with one motion. Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. We'll adjourn OC-MFA, convene as the Oklahoma City Public Property Authority. We merely have claims and payroll, but we'll go ahead and adopt that. Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. We'll adjourn OCPPA, convene as the Oklahoma City Environmental Assistance Trust, where we also have claims and payroll. Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. We'll adjourn the Oklahoma City Environmental Assistance Trust and reconvene as the council, where we find ourselves on page four of your printed agenda, item 7, the Consent Docket. I believe we only have one scheduled presentation, and that is for, two. Okay, I'm sorry. So that is for item AF and items AQ through AS, which would be one presentation. Is there anyone else who wants to pull out an item for some, just separate discussion or a separate vote?
7W, please.
Okay. Seeing nothing else, we'll take it in order, which means we will start right there. Councilwoman Nice.
Wonderful. I just wanted to make comments about some of the improvements, the park improvements that are taking place and have taken place at Booker T. Washington Park. And the most visible thing that I have seen thus far is a sign. And I know that's some of this conversation. There is a huge sign, monument sign that commemorates Booker T. Washington Park. And it says Booker T. Washington Park. And it looks very, very, very nice and complimentary to the improvements that have taken place thus far at that park. And we're definitely looking forward to the improvements to come as we move through Maps 4 as well. So I just want to make mention of that. And if you drive down 4th Street, please make sure you take a selfie right in front of a Booker T. Washington Park sign and celebrate and commemorate the legacy and the history of that park as well. Thank you.
Another $5 million coming through Maps 4 over the next few years. That's going to be exciting. That brings us to item AF that we had, a presentation for Eric Winger.
Yes. Eric Winger is here, our Public Works Director, to give us an update. This is just an update that we do annually on the Better Streets, Safer City projects from the sales tax, from the one cent sales tax. And Eric's going to give us an update on where we are with the projects.
Thank you, City Manager. Eric Winger, Public Works Director, and I'm actually going to co-present with Jeff Butler, the Planning Director. So we're going to, we're going to break this into two parts. But hopefully, everybody has a paper copy or a printed copy of our annual report. It looks like this on the cover. So this will be the second annual report for the Better Streets, Safer City program, having finished its second full year. What you're going to include in the report today is we're going to do just a brief summary and status of completions. But what we have included is two-year totals this time, so that you can see the total improvements that have either been planned or made. When you open up that cover, you're going to get a background of the program. And again, it's just a reminder that this is a significant sales tax program, $240 million, $168 million in resurfacing projects, $24 million in streetscapes, $24 million in sidewalks, $12 million in trails, and also $12 million in bike lanes. We have actually scheduled to finish up the sales tax completion on March 31st, because April 1st, we'll start the Maps 4 collections. And right now, I'm happy to report that we are currently slightly above our target revenue of about 6% over, if things continue to proceed through the month of March. And so it's a good thing to have a program that had an estimate of $240 million. We'll definitely make that collection. We should have a little extra that we can hopefully do some enhancements to some of the projects. When you go into page four of the report, it's going to be a highlight of the Advisory Board. The chair is Hal McKnight, who's been with us since day one, along with many of the other members. This section of the report also highlights that that board meets monthly. They meet here in the council chambers. They also make the recommendations that you receive regarding the projects. And one of the items on the council agenda today is also an amendment to the implementation plan for better streets that we'll consider later this morning. When we get into the financial overview, you're going to see here that we've got some of the summaries. And you can see, again, that we're, as I reported, slightly over the target collection. Total is about $13 million right now that is the projected over. We had $96 million in revenue in 2018. We had $119 million in 2019. Moving into the projects, and we have five different project categories. This is just a summary of the street resurfacing. So again, we have 60% of the funds that are going towards arterial streets. We have 40% of the funds that are going towards residential. To date, and we have some of the highlights that are here on the two-year program totals, you're going to see that we've already placed 214,000 tons of asphalt in resurfacing projects on Oklahoma City streets. We replaced more than 99,000 linear feet of curbing. We've improved 75 intersections and also improvements to over 850 ADA ramps. These numbers significantly increased this year. A lot of the projects and a lot of our focus in construction was in residential. And that's where we see a lot of the curb and gutter and a lot of the ramps that are added into those neighborhoods. We also have in the report, and this is on page 10, you're going to see the percentage of funding that has been approved based on the totals that I previously reported. You'll see two different percentages here. This is that 60-40 split. You're going to see 71%. And this is through December 31st. So again, this being an annual report, this is through the 31st, just in the last year. 71% of the arterial funding had been allocated, and 86% of the residential funding had been allocated. One of the comments that I would make is that as we bring projects under budget, funds are returned back to the individual project categories and reallocated, recommendations going back through the Advisory Board and then coming back to the City Council. Late last year, we had several million dollars that we were able to reallocate. Later on the agenda today, though, we do have some project budget revisions. They're going to need to utilize some of those monies just to help finish some projects that have gone over. But we're definitely coming under budget on the majority of projects, but there are those few that we run into some field conditions and slightly go over those budgets. But the final street recommendations for arterial and residential are underway. I expect that that recommendation to be made by the Advisory Board this spring. They did have a discussion regarding those additional projects at their last meeting, but they weren't quite ready to bring those forward to the City Council yet. So we do have some final street projects coming here in just the next month or two. We've included some of the highlight photos, just showing some of the before and after work. And again, tremendous improvement across Oklahoma City as we talk about street resurfacing. The next four categories, and this is where we're going to go ahead, and I'm going to turn over the presentation to Jeff Butler, Planning Director. He's going to highlight the street enhancements, the sidewalks, the trails, and also the bike lanes.
Good morning. So I'd like to talk a little bit about street enhancements. You can see on the right-hand side there that we have, we've made some good progress in several of the areas. And they're all moving at their own speeds, depending on kind of when they started and the complexity and what's going on with each project. We have $23.3 million of the $24 million that's been allocated. So we've got a little bit left for just contingency and so forth. A street enhancement can include many different things, depending on the context and what's needed in any particular corridor. It could include trees, lighting, additional sidewalks, bike lanes, improvements to the roadway itself. It just really depends on what's needed. And so we have a variety of different projects from Passo and Walker to Portland Avenue by the park over there, and the Plaza District, Northeast 23rd Street. So a lot of different areas of the city. So, a lot of different areas of the city are seeing some improvements there, and we're excited to see what happens. These tend to take a little bit longer because there's a lot of design involved, stakeholder engagement, and so, the process is a little bit longer. I mentioned before, some of the things that go into the street enhancements could be, could be a lot of different things, including public art, markers and so forth, benches, just ways to amenitize these areas and make them more livable streets. Sidewalks, you can see there, we've got 96% of our funding that has been allocated. And just to give you a little bit of a breakdown, we have 23 million of 24 that's been allocated. Downtown, we'll be spending, in the downtown area, 1.2 million. We'll be spending 2.4 million for sidewalks in the vicinity of parks to get people to parks safely. 13.8 million have been allocated to pedestrian priority areas. That's mostly kind of in the core of the city or the inner loop, areas that really need sidewalks, that are missing a lot of sidewalks now. We have 3.4 million dedicated to schools, getting people safely to elementary schools and other types of schools eventually. And 2.2 million focused on the transit system to help folks once they get off the buses or to provide ADA ramps and so forth, and better sidewalks to those bus stops. Bicycle infrastructure, and the lion's share of this is for on-street bicycle infrastructure. This is really the only category where we have quite a bit of funding that has not yet been allocated, and that's because we're taking it a little cautiously and slowly to make sure that we, that we get the funds right, that we allocate them to the right areas, and that we get our budgets and our costs just right, because this is something that we're relatively new to. So with that having been said, 53% is what we had allocated through the end of 2019, that's 6.3 million. We've since, are, we're in the process of allocating additional funds to those bike facilities. And we should be seeing a lot of that happen this year around the city. For trails, we've, we have 91% of that that's been allocated, and a lot of that has been allocated to resurfacing. We had a lot of our trails, such as the Lake Hefner Trail, that needed to be resurfaced, and so that's been done. And we also have a couple of new trails, including the Deep Fork Trail, that has quite a bit of funding actually from the sales tax and other sources. So we're excited that that is fully funded now and is able to be completed soon. And with that, I'll, I'll end on this slide that kind of shows you all the different project types throughout the city. We have 21 miles of sidewalk that have been constructed this past calendar year. As Eric mentioned, 38 miles of resurfaced streets and nine miles of trails that have been resurfaced and also other trails, new trails in design. And with that, Eric and I can take any questions you might have.
And I think just as a final comment, obviously, Better Streets, Safer City is a partnership project with several departments, Public Works, Planning, and also the Parks Department. The Trails' master plan is coordinated through Parks. And then, I would be remiss if I didn't say that the report that you have today was actually done in-house, it was not hired out. Shannon Cox, who's sitting in front of you today, is the author of the report, and so we appreciate her, her digital mastery on getting this all ready. And with your receipt of this report today, we'll be ready to upload this to the city's website at OKC.gov, making it available to anyone that would like to download a copy.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions, comments? Okay. Well, thank you very much. Exciting to see the largest street repair initiative in the city's history continue its progress. And now, I know we have a presentation for items AQ, and this may kind of run into AR and AS.
Yes, so, Brian, our Finance Director's here, is going to talk to us about, we'll go ahead and just discuss all three of the items, AQ and AR are both with our GO bond sale that'll be coming up, part of its tax exempt, part of its taxable, and he'll explain that. And then, AS is a GO bond refunding, so we'll just let him go ahead and go through all of that, present all that information right now before we get to voting on the items.
All right, good morning, Brian, Finance Director. As Craig, the Mayor, said, the, we have five items today, AQ, AR, and AS. AQ is, and all three of these, though, were, I want to emphasize, they were developed under the guise of a 16-mill levy. The city has a longstanding track record of keeping our mill levy at 16 mills, and so these amounts are based on maintaining an average of 16 mills. So, AQ is, we're seeking authorization to sell 51.265 million in taxable, tax-exempt bonds. These will be from, these were approved by the citizens back in 2017. And then, we also have on this item here on AQ2, is just an ordinance today introducing for the sale. We anticipate pricing on these on March 31st of this year with a closing sometime in mid-May. AR is a resolution authorizing taxable bonds in the amount of 60 mil, a little over 60 million dollars again. These were authorized by the citizens back in 2017, and pricing will be on March 31st with a closing around May 14th. And again, we're also introducing a, the ordinance today for it, so we can have the necessary notices that were required. Item 7S, AS, is a resolution authorizing staff to begin the process of refunding our 2010 bonds. When we issue GO bonds, we issue them on a 20-year term timeframe, and typically, we do, we structure it where the bonds in years 11 through 20 of that time can be refinanced or refunded. And the, we have a policy that if we can refund bonds and have at least a 3% savings, we'll do that. And in this case, our staff's looked at it, working with our financial advisor, we anticipate approximately a little over $4 million of savings, which is the equivalent of about 13%. So we're seeking to start the process. And in approving the resolution today, it will establish the financing plan, it authorizes the notice of hearing, authorizes the selection of our underwriters from a pre-qualified pool this council's already approved, and authorizing the preparation of a preliminary official statement. Again, we'll bring back another item to you regarding the refunding. It's approximately 33 million, 865 million dollars that we'll be seeking to refund, and we'll be bringing back the final information on that again in March 31st. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, comments? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Well, that was all of the items that we had pulled out for discussion. Would entertain a motion. Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes, passes unanimously. Brings us to the concurrence docket. We could take these items with one motion, A through E. Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes, passes unanimously. Item 9, items requiring separate votes. We have 9A1 and 2, I believe are related to each other. 9A1 is an amendment to the master design statement, but let's look at 9A2. That's an ordinance on final hearing that was recommended for approval at the Planning Commission. It is at 1625 Northwest 16th Street, going from R1 to SPD 1160. Looks like this was deferred from February 4th. Councilwoman Hammond?
Yeah, is the applicant present? Yeah, if you could just come forward and talk a little bit about your project. I know you've worked with both staff and then with the surrounding neighborhood, but I kind of wanted to have everyone hear what y'all are doing.
Thank you, Mayor, Councilmen. My name is Casey Gray. I'm the applicant, 1625 Northwest 16th Street. It is a mixed-use proposed building that has a mixture of commercial and residential on top. It's up to three stories. We initially had a couple of options, and through meetings with the neighbors and a lot of diligent work, we're able to come up with this final resolution that has no protests. We initially received a lot of protests, but we were able to work all those out, and I'm here to answer any questions that you guys have.
Well, I don't have any questions, and I will move for approval.
Amendment.
Oh, sorry, sorry. I'll move the amendment.
Okay, so this is a motion for item 9A1, the amendment to the master design statement. We've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes, passes unanimously.
And then I'll move the ordinance.
All right. Now, this is a motion for 9A2, and I, did somebody say second?
No.
Okay, got it. We've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes, passes unanimously. All right, 9B is an ordinance on final hearing for closure of the 20-foot platted alleys between Southwest 10th and Southwest 11th, and also between South Agnew and South Youngs. Councilwoman Hammond, there is someone who has signed up to speak.
Okay.
Colin Walkie, in his private capacity.
Good morning, Mayor. Good morning, councilmembers. Colin Walkie, 5219 North Miller Place. I'm here on behalf of the applicant, and this is simply to re-close an alley between some commercial property that my client owns, and I'm willing to answer any questions.
I have none, and I will move for approval.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes, passes unanimously. Get back up there and represent us, Representative. All right, 9C1, this is an ordinance to be entered, oh, okay. This is actually started as 9C2, which was the proposed marijuana vaping updates, and then at the third meeting of consideration, an amendment was brought forward, so the whole item was deferred. And now, the way this is presented on the agenda is a new version of it by Councilwoman Hammond, which is here as 9C1, and then the original version is 9C2. So maybe I kind of turn it over to you to...
Yeah, I brought this forward last meeting and was requested to defer, which I was fine with. Mostly from my perspective and from hearing from residents, I, I wanted to bring this forward mostly because in my mind, it didn't make sense quite to separate the vaping and smoking and kind of treating them differently about marijuana or tobacco. So, so I approached legal about that, and yeah, I will motion for approval for the amendment or the ordinance.
For 9C1, okay.
Unless there are any questions or concerns.
Okay, got a motion? Yes, Councilman Cooper?
So, I really appreciate the councilperson's amendment, because I, I don't like the targeting of marijuana as this thing, so I really appreciate that. I, I feel like the voters spoke, however, when they passed 788. And while I don't like the idea of someone necessarily smoking a joint in a park, when it comes to something like vaping of that substance, when people are dealing with depression and anxiety and bipolar, and there are all kinds of medical reasons for people to use medical marijuana, I can't in good conscience support this sort of restriction. And especially knowing the history of how this drug became illegal in the first place, which was very, very, very rooted in a discrimination against Hispanic and Latinx people in the 1930s and kind of a hysteria around marijuana and its consequences. And we know from good science today that that just doesn't hold up to research. So, for those reasons, I can't support this restriction. Do not mistake this restriction as me thinking that tobacco is something that we should be smoking in general. Though far be it from me to tell people how to live their lives. So I just wanted to state that that's why it's hard for me to support prohibiting someone from smoking medical marijuana in public like that. So, thank you for listening.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second on adoption of 9C1. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes, passes 8 to 1.
We need the emergency there.
Okay, okay, so we need an emergency motion on this as well. Got a motion and a second on the emergency. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes, also passes 8 to 1. So that means we'll move on, we don't need to consider 9C2, and that'll bring us to 9D1. This is a public hearing regarding ordinance related to the mechanical code. This was explained and presented at our previous meeting, so we have three meetings where we'll consider this. This one is just today, the public hearing. Is there anyone who wishes to speak regarding this proposed, these proposed changes to the mechanical code? Seeing none, I'd move to item 9D2, which is also a public hearing. This is regarding a resolution declaring the need for the adoption of the mechanical code. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak under this public hearing? Seeing none, I'll move on to 9E1. This is also a public hearing, and similarly, this plumbing, these plumbing code updates were explained at the previous meeting and would be considered at our next meeting, but today is merely a public hearing. And is there anyone who wishes to speak on this public hearing regarding item 9E1? Seeing none, I'll move on to 9E2, which is a resolution, or a public hearing regarding a resolution declaring the need for the adoption of the plumbing code. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak under this public hearing for 9E2? Seeing none, I'll move on to yet another public hearing, 9F, regarding the fuel gas code. Again, second of three meetings in consideration of this resolution. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak regarding this resolution on the fuel gas code, item 9F? Seeing none, I'll move on to item 9G1. This is a public hearing regarding the dilapidated structures here listed, except for the one struck at the beginning of the meeting. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak regarding these dilapidated structures? If you do, please state your name and address and keep your remarks below three minutes.
We all know the incomparable Michael C. Washington's standing here. Now then, don't we first need a presentation before I can comment? I'm only interested in those in Ward 7, by the way. Now then, 137 Southwest 15th Street, House Ward 7. Can I get that one, please, sir? Oh, Lord have mercy, I haven't seen enough. Okay, I don't have argument with that one. Okay, now, let's see, 4229 Bosworth Avenue, AK 10728, Northeast 43rd Street. Oh, I'm sorry, see, I'm, I'm moving a little faster, okay. Well, I guess that's the only ones in that area, then I guess I move on to the next one then. Is that, I don't see any Ward 7s up there. Are those it? Okay, so what do we have next, Ward 7, sir?
The other one you mentioned's on the unsecured docket.
Okay, so when do we need...
Sorry, Mr. Washington, we're on dilapidated structures right now, G1.
Okay, so, okay, well, I'm through with that part then.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak under this public hearing regarding the dilapidated structures at 9G1? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to adopt a resolution found in 9G2 declaring that the structures are dilapidated. Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes, passes unanimously. Now we're at 9H1. This is the public hearing regarding the unsecured structures here listed, except for the one struck at the beginning of the meeting. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak under this public hearing regarding these unsecured structures?
Michael Washington, 2900 Northeast 18th Street, Oklahoma City, Oklahoma, 73111, it's 3 ones. Now then, I don't know, have these people been contacted regarding the unsecured structures, sir?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and have we gotten any responses from them?
I don't believe so.
Okay, and can you, I mean, how many times have you actually gone out and gave notification that this needs to be corrected or...
We've posted a notice on the property, and we've mailed one to the owner for...
Okay, so how many times are they given before maybe you come out and do your own work and then maybe charge them or what have you? I don't know the actual steps in that regard.
Well, we've made them aware that there's a meeting today to address the issue, and then if they do not comply, we'll get out, get a contractor out to secure the property.
Okay, and then you've been charging for doing that?
We'll send them a bill.
Okay, good. So now, do we have any kind of idea about how much payment that would be?
It varies from property to property, depending on how many openings are there.
Okay, thank you, sir. 2201 North Kate Avenue, Ward 7. Oh, okay, thank you, ma'am. 2008 North Martin. All right, it didn't, it just said unsecured, that's why, that's why I don't know that. Okay. Yes, yeah, yeah. Lord have mercy, they need to do something with all that. I'll tell you, normally I don't agree with y'all, but y'all got me on this, and I agree. Come on, let's, I don't need to see that anymore. Yeah, they need to do something with that. Okay, then we got 19... Okay, then we got 1917 Northeast 26th Street. You need me to help you go bulldoze other places? I will. Good Lord, man. Okay, yeah, let's—yeah, I see. Man, I see y'all doing a good job. Okay, let me see if I got one more. Okay, that's secured. Thank y'all, that's enough for me.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak under the public hearing regarding the items at nine H1? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to adopt the resolution found in nine H2 declaring the structures are unsecured. Got a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Nine I1. This is a public hearing regarding the abandoned buildings here listed, except for the ones previously stricken at the beginning of the meeting. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak under this public hearing regarding these abandoned buildings?
Michael Washington, 2900 repeatedly and nonstop, 73111. Okay, now, abandoned building. Now, what do we mean by that, sir? Abandonment? What do we mean by that?
Any building that's declared unsecured or dilapidated also will be declared abandoned.
Okay, now then, so if they declare abandoned, then that means that the city can come in and take it and do what they want? Well, what does that mean?
City's not going to take any property.
Okay, then, so that means this here and then is designed for—to do what then? I mean, just to declare it abandoned and that's just it? No more?
It's used as a tool to bring the owner of the property into compliance.
Okay, now, let's go to 107. I don't know if this has been stricken. Y'all have to help me, I wasn't here. 10732 Northeast 43rd Street. I'll tell you, man, these people should be ashamed of themselves. And I'm an activist for every one of these people. Oh, yeah, that's enough. Okay, then you got—not enough cherry was stricken, 2004 North Cherry Avenue. Excuse me.
Yes, that's stricken.
Okay. 2201 North Kate.
Yes, that's stricken.
Okay. 1100 South Robertson Avenue? Does bring down—I at least think it does bring down property value. There's no question about that. Okay. Let me see. 137 Southwest 15th Street. Oh, I've seen that one. Yeah, I think I've seen—the yeah, okay, well, I think I've seen the rest. Well, I'll tell you what, man, yeah, they need to be contacted. Thank you.
All right. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak under this public hearing regarding the items at nine I1? Seeing none, I entertain a motion to adopt the resolution found at nine I2 declaring that the buildings are abandoned.
Move the resolution.
Got a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Okay, we are at nine J1. This is a public hearing regarding the allocation of general obligation limited tax proceeds that would be detailed under item nine J2. Of course, this was something we were presented on at our last meeting, $400,000 going to Little Wasted LLC, Doing Businesses Bakery Bling. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak under the public hearing at nine J1? Seeing none, I entertain motion or discussion at nine J2, the joint resolution with the Oklahoma City Economic Development Trust approving the allocation of said proceeds.
Move the item.
Got a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Item nine K1 is a public hearing regarding an allocation from Increment District Number Two to cover commercial development costs—uh, from the commercial development cost category of the amended and restated Downtown MAPS Economic Development Project Plan. This public hearing is in regards to item nine K2, which is a resolution approving an allocation of $750,000 from Increment District Number Two, going to Bar K—proposed to go to Bar K Dog Park Economic Development Project. This was, of course, presented to us at our last meeting. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak under the public hearing portion here at nine K1? Seeing none, I entertain discussion or motion regarding the item at nine K2.
I do have a question. So I just want to make clear. So the amount that would come from the—or would be allocated from the TIF would be the $750,000.
That's correct.
And I think in their presentation, they had said that the parking lot that they're building is about $650,000.
I believe that's correct. Do you have that, Joanna? I don't recall the exact project amount.
I'd probably have to look up—
I think—I remember—
The details on their presentation.
I know I have it in my email. Because so my concern is that, in the same meeting, we had a presentation about downtown parking, and we learned that we are incredibly overparked, and just north of the highway, just a 10-minute walk—which in my mind, sorry—my mind would be a pleasant walk for a dog owner to take their dog from this public parking lot down through the canal and over to the dog park is like a lot of parking spaces. So it seems strange to me that the amount we're giving—or allocating, rather, would be about the amount that they're using to build a parking lot that they don't really need, based on our study. So I just—I think from my perspective, I have a hard time approving this allocation. Let me—
So I imagine that's probably about right. And I would say that our study, the downtown parking study, did not include this area.
I understand that.
It was just into the core of downtown.
I understand that, but this is literally adjacent, and again, it's a 10-minute walk from a little piece that would have been included. So I just—that's—and, okay, so they actually have that the parking and site improvements are about $900,000. So in my mind, you know, if they did away with that parking, that's, you know, about $900,000 they could save, and maybe have an agreement with the other parking lots in the area. So that's—I just wanted to clarify that that was the case.
Yeah, and this parking will be available not only to the facility there and the restaurant and bar and everything there, it'll also be available to use in the Boathouse District for events in the Boathouse District.
I can understand that, but again, my concern is that we just don't need it, so—
And I'll say, you know, being able to travel in the area of Boathouse District, I totally understand where Councilwoman Hammond is coming from, but I've also seen it overcrowded down there as far as the parking is concerned. So it is—the only compromise I can give for this is because it's going to be shared. It's not going to be particularly—particularly just for Bar K, but it, again, is for the overall Boathouse District. And I'm telling you, if you go down there on an event that they have on the weekend, you can barely—you're parking in the grass. You're not parking in a parking place, because it's just so crowded in the area. And I've also seen people park literally over the bridge in order to be able to make it to some of those events. So again, I totally understand where you're coming from in this instance. I definitely understand, unfortunately, why there is a need just for that particular space as well. And, you know, as far as Bar K is concerned, it's a hard one to swallow, as far as the membership and the things that are going to come with that. But as we're looking at the improvements for the Boathouse District and also the inclusion of the communities that surround it, I believe—and I've had the conversation with Mr. Lee, I believe that's his name—that he is very committed to ensuring that we have diversity in this development, and that we also have people who would not have been afforded the opportunity to be a part of this membership or to bring their dogs to this particular establishment, that they will be able to do that. So hopefully, he took a point from you last time, and he's going to put that dog in the backpack and ride on his bike when he comes back to the city. So hopefully, he'll do that, but—
Well, and I would say to the point of the parking being super crowded, the times I've gone to the district, I take the bus, and so it drops me off essentially at Bass Pro Shops, and I have to walk or, if I had my bike with me, bike down the, you know, 10 minutes that it is. And so the connectivity to that forces people to drive, because it's what's available and what's easiest. So, yeah.
Any further discussion on the item or a motion?
I move.
All right. We've got a motion for nine K2. So this is a resolution approving the allocation to Bar K Project. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes eight to one. Moving on to nine L. This is a resolution adopting the February 2020 update to the Community and Neighborhood Enhancement Program Project Implementation Plan. I mean, really, really, program project implementation plan, and approving allocation of Better Streets Safer City Sales Tax Funds, estimated cost approximately $3.6 million. I believe we have a presentation.
Yes. Eric Winger, our Public Works Director, is here to present on this. This is something where we've adopted implementation plan and just amended it as the board approved up new projects, and so we brought that back to the council each time, and so Eric will give us an update on the changes that are coming forth.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. So it is just an update today. This is to take care of some budget revisions. As we kind of presented in the annual report, there are a few projects that tend to lean over budget. As we get into the field and we get into conditions that aren't able to achieve the original project budget, we amend. And so there's actually three categories of amendment that are included in this plan. The first is resurfacing. There were two arterial streets and three of our residential neighborhood streets that needed some budget amendments, just to help them finish the projects that were started. The total for the resurfacing additions is 1.9 million. There was one sidewalk project that required a budget amendment near the Prairie Queen Elementary School. It needs an additional $129,000. And then there were four budget revisions to bicycle infrastructure projects, and this was the area that Planning Director Jeff Butler mentioned. It's one of our newest areas as we're creating these budgets, as we're detailing out the bicycle lanes and infrastructure for Oklahoma City. There's various additions to the main general Pershing Bike Lane, the Spring Lake, the Indiana Linwood, and also the Lottie. And there's about $1.6 million in additional funds that are available within Better Streets that need to be added to those projects so that we complete them successfully. So the total addition with all the categories today is $3,694,284. And I'd be happy to answer your questions, as you might have.
Yes, I have a question. I know as we're looking at North Martin Luther King Avenue from 36th to 50th, this is an astronomical amount as we're looking at. I know it's concrete, if I'm not mistaken, but I'm curious to know if there are other areas we can also focus on, because as I'm looking at some of these other costs, this one stretch of road, we could get quite a few others done that, in my opinion, need a lot of attention. Is it possible to figure out other ways we can best use this money as we look to better actually—to better improve North Martin Luther King Avenue from 36th to 50th? And also thinking in terms of the bond that Metro Tech has, if they would be willing to help offset some of those costs when it comes to Metro Tech being literally on this stretch of that street?
Yes, so two comments here. So first is, the list of 18 projects that were in the original implementation plan were not adopted by the Better Streets Safer City Advisory Board and are not recommended for your approval today. So only the ones with budget amendments are those in the plan that are being recommended. These are going to be coming back to the city council at a future meeting, because they too weren't ready, and the question was raised on the $4.5 million that's identified for Martin Luther King. Board member Sandina Thompson had the exact same question, and the conversation was, is there an ability for the board to see the additional list of projects that are the next priority projects beneath the 18 that are included in this original list? And the answer is yes. We're going to be showing the advisory board those at their next meeting next month, and I suspect that there will be a conversation that will be had, and the potential for a recommendation to be made that that project not be done, but it could be done. It just hasn't been received by the board. To answer the cost of the question, concrete streets cannot be resurfaced. One of the things that we've started updating as a part of our payment management and payment program for Oklahoma City is that when a concrete street fails and it gets those large cracks in it, which is what's occurring on Martin Luther King, the entire section has to be removed and the entire street has to be replaced. Different than an asphalt street where we can do a mill, we can mill off that top two or three inches of damaged surface course and replace. Martin Luther King is going to require all of that material to come completely out, which is why the cost is as high as it is. If we were to replace Martin Luther King with a new asphalt street, we could save a few hundred thousand dollars. One of the advantage to an asphalt street going back in, replacing a concrete, would be, in 15 or 20 years, when that street required resurfacing, we would have the benefit of then a mill and an overlay versus a complete street replacement, should it fail again. So those are the questions that have been asked also by the board. We're going to take that information back to them for the review and approval, and we'll bring their recommendation forward to you next month on the new projects to be added. But your approval today is not adding any new projects, only the budget revisions to those that need the additional funding for construction.
Thank you for that clarification, but I do want to continue to say, I don't want us to neglect that street, because I drive it all the time, and it is a bumpy road, and it does definitely need some assistance. So I still want to keep that at the forefront as we try to figure out other ways that we can improve other streets as well. So thank you for that.
And based on our rating system, it is a highly rated street to be replaced. So as we've worked the worst streets of the city off of the streets list, it being number four on the arterial list that you can see as part of the information, it is quite high, so it supersedes several other projects. So—but we'll bring all that information back to you so that we'll present that in the next month.
Any other questions, comments for Eric? Well, we have a resolution here. I would entertain a motion. Some motions and seconds mumbled, and I'll take them in any way they come. We've got a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Nine M1. Resolution authorizing the municipal councillor to confess judgment without admission of liability in the case styled Puente v. City of OKC. Don't believe we need executive session.
Move the resolution.
Got a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. We have a series of executive sessions now. We'll take the votes to go into executive session, but we'll actually do so at the end of our other business. Nine N. Enter into executive session on advice of the municipal councillor to receive confidential communications regarding Brewer v. City of OKC.
Would be added into executive session.
Got a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. As I said, we'll handle that at the end of our other business. Nine O. Enter into executive session on advice of the municipal councillor to receive confidential communications regarding pending opioid legislation on behalf of the City of Oklahoma City.
Would be added into executive session.
Got a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. We'll handle that at the end of our other business. Nine P. Enter into executive session on advice of the municipal councillor to receive confidential communications regarding potential litigation concerning environmental remediation obligations.
Move the add.
Motion in a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. We'll handle that at the end of our other business. And nine Q. Enter into executive session to discuss collective bargaining negotiations for the upcoming fiscal year 2020-21 with FOP, firefighters, and AFSMI.
Move the add.
Got a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. We'll handle that at the end of our other business. Now we will go into items from council. Item 10. We'll handle the business items first, and then we'll go around the horseshoe. 10A is a resolution approving travel and reimbursement of travel-related expenses for Councilwoman JoBeth Hammond to attend the National Bike Summit in Arlington, Virginia, March 14th through the 17th.
Move the resolution.
Got a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously, and with the six affirmative votes. And 10B. Enter into executive session to discuss the hiring appointment for the current municipal judge vacancy.
Would be added into executive session.
Got a motion in a second to go into executive session. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. We will handle that executive session as well as the others at the end of our other business. And now we'll go around the horseshoe. Councilman Greiner?
Okay, so I'm going to need some patience, because I have quite a bit this morning. First, I'd like to thank Public Works and Planning and the Homeless Alliance for visiting with Mayfair West Neighbors at a recent Neighborhood Association meeting, taking time out of their evening to do so. Just really want to thank them for that. Want to thank the Neighborhood of Douglas Edgmere for a recent Neighborhood Association meeting as well. It was very well-attended and a lot of good ideas flowing back and forth. I'd like to congratulate my neighborhood, the Paseo, on writing and passing their first bylaws in a very long time. They are—they had been an inactive Neighborhood Association, and now they're active again, They had been an inactive Neighborhood Association and now they're active again, and I'm very excited about that, especially because of, you heard earlier, the Better Street Safer City Sales Tax and Geo Bond funding. Well, that's going to lead to a bit of a facelift for Paseo in the next several months. And having a Neighborhood Association as well as the Paseo Arts District there to help steward those dollars is very important. So I just want to say congratulations to people. Speaking of congratulations, I wanted to congratulate Councilperson Stonecypher and Stone, I believe. No, I'm sorry. Always congratulations to you. But congratulations to Councilperson Stonecypher and to Councilperson Greenwell. I believe we're at your one-year anniversary of reelection last year. Is that about right? Congratulations.
Still here.
Glad to have you. Councilperson Hammond, you as well. We won on the same night, February 12th, and I want to congratulate you. Mayor, I believe we just had an anniversary for your mayoral victory. Congratulations. And now I want to go kind of deep, and I very specifically want to speak to Oklahoma City's students, teachers, and parents. And I want to start by congratulating Councilperson Nice for your victory. I know it was November 18, but I haven't had a chance from the horseshoe to offer that congratulations. As I've been working with my students at OCU and UCO, reading Boomtown and comparing Boomtown and Oklahoma City's Renaissance story to the Italian Renaissance, Councilperson Nice's victory has resonated a bit further in my head. You are only the 10th woman, as you know, to serve on city council, and as a person of color, it's significant, your victory. This is Black History Month, as we know, and we know that the emphasis this month is on voting. And people have fought and died. They have marched on Washington. They have delivered incredible, famous, I Have a Dream speeches to make sure that people who have been denied the franchise since literally the founding of this country, remember slavery begins in 1619, black men are afforded the right to vote in the immediate aftermath of the Civil War and then denied it for another 100 years. And that excluded black women. Even as black men were allowed to vote, recall, black women were excluded from that franchise because women generally were excluded from the franchise. We considered them property of men. And so that makes your victory all the more significant. And I know it's hard when people talk about, you know, congratulations because we like to sit and being humble. And so I hate to put you on the spot like that. But I want to kind of walk us back because when I ran that campaign, people asked me to attend to their schools. And the best I am able to do was to make sure in MAPS 4 there were youth centers so that people had a place, kids had a place to go on the weekends, after schools, during summer and winter and fall and spring breaks, those months off during summer. But God help me, I have no control over your curriculum, students. I can't change what's going on in your classrooms. And it breaks my heart because as a teacher on leave this year from Jefferson Middle School on the South Side, and to read stories as I've done this last week in the Free Press about the increase in fights that have happened in Oklahoma City public schools, the increase in suspension in that last year since I left, it is breaking my heart in a million pieces. I feel like I left something and I feel like I left those kids, and I want to give them the skills they're going to need to fight and persevere. Because Black History Month is not just a month to revisit the terror of slavery and the terror of lynching. It is the time to revisit the resilience of black folk, the resilience of folk like Madam C.J. Walker, who became the first female millionaire, black or white, during the terror of lynching. That's what we achieved as a people. And we must tell these stories of resilience to our students because I think in so many ways, they are swimming upstream. And I just want to share with those students and those teachers and those parents today what keeps me strong. And there are seven people, seven people that I want to have on everyone's mind right now, seven. It will sound, if I don't tell you that there are seven, it will sound like I'm just rambling. So I want to walk you through seven people that have guided me over the last 20 years. I graduated from Choctaw in 2000 as a millennial. And a lot of the history I've learned of resilience, I didn't learn until the last 20 years outside of school. So to students, I tell you, the education is staring at you on Amazon Prime. It is staring at you on YouTube. And I want to walk you through a couple people. Number one, Mumbett, M-U-M-B-E-T-T, Mumbett, 1780. She was a slave. And though she could not read or write in Massachusetts, she, as she served her master, she heard about a new document, the Declaration of Independence, the Constitution, and she heard that all men were created equal. And whoopsie doopsie, she took that idea in her head and she said, well, if all people are created equal, why not me? Ain't I human? And she ran away and she hired a lawyer and she sued. And she won. And because she sued and won, because she believed in the founding principles of this country, they abolished slavery in Massachusetts. That's who Mumbett is. That's black women. That's what we are capable of achieving when we hold ourselves to the highest ideals of our founding principles. It's right there in the Declaration and the Constitution. Look no further. Number two, Mary Peake. Mary Peake was a teacher. And she, in 1861, will be one of the very first people to teach black children in this country. And she will do so at a tree that still exists, the Emancipation Oak, and that's at Hampton in Virginia, which is today the site of Hampton University. That's who Mary Peake is. And Mary Peake did this at a time when black people from the South were escaping from slavery, yeah, from 1861 year during the Civil War, escaping from slavery, coming to the North. I know it might be weird to think of Virginia as the North, and yet it was in this weird way. But the only way black people were able to stay safe in Virginia was a general had called them contraband, contraband of war. They had to literally call them property and then say they were the property of the North. That was the only way to protect them. Remember, if you ran away as a slave, they took your foot, your toes first, your ears second, and then your private parts third. You did not just escape from slavery. This Kanye West idea that slavery was a choice is just to fly in the absolute face of every documented piece of history we have. Mary Peake taught black students not just to have a skill, but she taught them to free your mind. This was about putting in your mind the ideals of the Declaration and the Constitution, and that's what she did. And these black kiddos and their parents, there was a story of a daughter and a mother who would share one dress, one dress, just one dress. The daughter would go to school during the day and the mother in the evening. That's how important education was. Because remember, slaves were not allowed by law to read. I suspect it's because if they had had, for instance, the opportunity to read the Bible, they would have read the story of Moses and didn't, my Lord deliver, right? And that was why you could not have education for slaves. That was their argument. And Mary Peake knew better. She would die just a couple years later. Three, Booker T. Washington. Booker made an argument to the people in the South. Cast down your bucket, he said. Get a skill. Take care of yourself through industrial training, he said. Stay in the South. It's your home, he argued. Which leads us to number four, W.E.B. Du Bois. We had a counterargument. He argued, like Mary Peake, free your mind, he said. We must root our education in the liberal arts. That was his argument. He said the only way to raise consciousness was through fiction, through storytelling, through identification with protagonists who were going through similar struggles. He was borrowing his ideas from Aristotle from 2,000 years earlier. Du Bois just so happens to be the great-grandchild of Mumbett, and he's born in the very same place that Mumbett won her case to abolish, to free herself and lead to the abolition of slavery in Massachusetts. This will be arguments that Du Bois is making during a time of lynching that will really get underway in the 1880s and 90s and will continue all the way through the 1960s. Number five, Zilia Broke, right here in Oklahoma City, who was a music teacher. She played the trumpet, the violin, and the piano. She will create the first music department at Langston University. But importantly, here in Oklahoma City, she will make sure that during a time of segregation, that every black student in a segregated OKC learns how to play an instrument, learns music theory, and music history. She believed that all of that was something that a child should know. And do you know what? Through that history, through that education, the black students in Deep Duce helped right alongside New Orleans to invent a whole new genre of music, jazz. That's what we did during the height of terror of lynching. We created one of the most popular forms of music this world has ever known. Six, Clara Looper. I would like to go ahead and say that Clara, who marched with Hearst students to desegregate the city in a peaceful, nonviolent protest, she and Martin Luther King are going to be borrowing the ideas of Socrates, also from 2,000 earlier, and that's my seventh person. Socrates, and this is quoting from the Letter from Birmingham Jail, this is when Martin Luther King has been arrested for marching to desegregate the South, he said, quote, "You may well ask, why direct action? Why sit-ins, marches, and so forth? Isn't negotiation a better path?" To which he responds, "I have earnestly worked and preached against violent tension, but there is a type of constructive, nonviolent tension that is necessary for growth. Just as Socrates felt it was necessary to create a tension in the mind so that individuals could rise from the bondage of myths and half-truths to the unfettered realm of creative analysis and objective appraisal, we must see the need of having nonviolent gadflies to create the kind of tension in society that will help men to rise from the dark depths of prejudice and racism to the majestic heights of understanding and brotherhood." Students and teachers and parents, I would encourage you to watch a PBS documentary called Many Rivers to Cross on African-American history. I would encourage you to dig a little bit deeper into who those seven people were. We cannot wait. We cannot wait. Students in Oklahoma are facing the highest adverse childhood experience scores. It's destroying their minds, the traumas they have experienced. And it's not just individual traumas of neglect at home or child abuse. It's also historical traumas. This legacy of Jim Crow, this legacy of slavery has been passed down. And we now know through neuroscience, through biology, that traumas pass down in the womb. They pass down through the DNA. We must confront this awful history, this stain, and we must look at the people in that history who were resilient and fought back and persevered and made a way out of nowhere. I speak at length about this this week and last week because, as I said, not last week, two weeks ago, we too often don't speak about this. And in our schools, we consider our children discipline problems. They are not. They are not. What they are are human beings who are experiencing trauma, and we have not taught them conflict resolution. We have not taught them Socrates. And until we do, Oklahoma City, this will continue. This cycle of violence will continue. These fights will continue. These news stories will continue about our school district and our students. I am begging you. I have done what I can to get those youth centers into MAPS 4, to give our students a place to go. And I am begging you to think differently about education, to not just think about having a skill, but freeing your mind and thinking about the importance of philosophy and psychology. Until we do, this cycle continues. But I have hope in you. I have hope in us, and we must take on this crisis in education. We must. Our children's lives depend on it. Thank you.
Councilman Green, Councilwoman Hammond?
Yeah, tough act to follow. So I first just wanted to mention that I want to thank the council for approving my trip to San Antonio that I took last week. It was really enlightening. I hope to have something a little more formal to share. In particular, there were a few documents that our hosts are able to share with us that I'd like to forward on that provide information about the Restoration Center and even the virtual tour of their sobering center, which is partially what we are modeling our MAPS 4 Restoration Center off of. So we got to meet a few of the folks doing the work on the ground, including Officer Ernie, is what he goes by. He and his partner Joe, who was unfortunately out sick that day, they are, they're sort of the folks that when you read about the national work happening around mental illness and diversion from jails, they've gotten a lot of press coverage. And actually, they, Ernie mentioned a documentary on HBO called Ernie and Joe Crisis Cops that I encourage anyone to watch. I haven't gone to watch it yet, but I hope it's on my list. But it was really enlightening. We learned that 100% of their police department is CIT-trained. It's not an option. When you go through the academy, you get trained in crisis intervention. And Ernie specifically said, because we know that regardless of whether it's the mental health unit that's getting called to, getting called, the people that we're interacting with are in crisis, whether it's a domestic dispute, someone got into a car wreck, you know, someone was assaulted, everyone's in crisis that they're interacting with. And so having that training was really important to their police department. We also got to tour the Behar County Jail, and what I found to be enlightening was as much as amazing work as they've done around diversion, they're still housing their most seriously mentally ill residents in jails. And the thing that they cited was that they are also a state that has not expanded Medicaid, and those community resources for people to have the preventative services, the community mental health centers are, the access just isn't there. So they still house about 40 people waiting for state hospital beds in jail because they just keep cycling through. And so they've stored them there until there's a bed available. And then they expressed that because, again, those community resources aren't available. So that was a lesson for me that as much great work as some other communities have done, they're still facing a lot of the same challenges. And so that's where I hope that we can advocate to the state and to the people in our communities that we really need to invest in those community resources. I'd also like to, I'm not going to read my whole thing. It's a pretty long synopsis, but I, every week of February, I've been posting, thank you to the Metropolitan Library System Special Collections and Research Department. They've been helping me with research about the Black History of Ward 6. And someone had tipped me off that Tolan Park was actually named after an African-American individual from Michigan, but he was such a famous person at the time of the naming of the park that the park board in the 20s and 30s decided to name the park after him. It's Tolan Park, which now is no longer city-owned. It's actually essentially the lawn in front of the Goodwill on Reno. So if you're ever driving down Reno and look to the left and see a grassy area, that was the Black Park that the city designated in the 20s and 30s. It was named after Eddie Tolan, who was an Olympic sprinter. And speaking to Councilman Cooper's stories of resilience, you know, he was an Olympian at a time when, you know, there was still segregation. He didn't have the same opportunities and achieved such greatness in his track and field. So I have that posted on my Facebook, and it's a really interesting story. Also mentions the development of Booker T. Washington Park after Tolan Park was sold to a private entity. So... So I've been learning a lot about Ward 6, and I feel it's been fascinating. So I appreciate Councilwoman's nice inspiration to find, you know, black history, even, you know, in the areas of town where we don't think of as historically impacted by, by black lives. So with that, oh, also, yes, the big thing. So I'd like to invite Megan Mueller from the Homeless Alliance to come up and do a presentation. I know I've been getting a lot of calls, city staff has been getting a lot of calls about folks camping in Ward 6 and in efforts to not criminalize people living outside, knowing that again, those community resources are stretched thin and doing what they can. I asked Homeless Alliance to come and present about the coordinated outreach efforts that they've been doing so that we all can be educated and know how best to receive those calls and where to refer people to. So with that, I'll pass it over to Megan for the presentation.
Great. Thank you so much. Like she said, I'm Megan Mueller. I'm the Director of Community Capacity Building for the Homeless Alliance, and Councilwoman Hammond invited me to come speak about our current outreach efforts. We are proud as a community of the outreach efforts that we offer to people experiencing homelessness, and so I'm thankful for the opportunity to be here with you today. First, I just wanted to show you guys this list of our coordinated outreach team. So as a community of service providers, we have found and we recognize that regularly meeting with each other has been invaluable in our efforts to end homelessness in Oklahoma City, and so outreach efforts are no different. These partners that are listed on this slide convene monthly. That meeting is convened in partnership between the Homeless Alliance and the City of Oklahoma City Homeless Service Division of the Planning Department. So each month, we have these partners meeting together around the table, working together. You can see we have nonprofit, government, faith-based, and even some smaller grassroots organizations who all participate in that monthly meeting. And the point of the meeting is to ensure that we are aware of each other's efforts. As you know, resources are limited, so we don't want to be duplicating efforts, and we want to make sure that folks in areas of our community aren't falling through the gaps. Some of the main efforts that we address through that coordinated outreach meeting are outreach mapping, which informs our annual point in time count. We also help get the word out regarding cold weather contingency, and we try to find additional ways that we can collaborate and work together more efficiently. I wanted to share with you this photo. This is a snippet of the outreach map that we update regularly through those coordinated outreach meetings. So this is a living document. Every month, we're looking at it together with those partners. Just to give you some context for what you're looking at on the map, the yellow dots indicate camps. So those would be locations where there are multiple people camping. Red dots indicate individuals who are camping. Blue are structures. Green are vehicles that are known to be parked where people are living. And then the black dots represent sites that are no longer active, but that we want to keep on our radar should they repopulate. We, we know that we cannot solve problems that we cannot define, so keeping this map up to date becomes a crucial part of our outreach efforts and, and really the efforts of our community as a whole to end homelessness. Like I said, that map informs our annual point in time count. So each year during the fourth week of January, we send out over 250 volunteers into our community to help us survey people who are experiencing homelessness. This year, we had our most thorough count to date, largely in part due to those efforts by the coordinated outreach team. We sent volunteers to over 100 campsites that we had identified throughout the year. So we really are very thorough. We're trying to stay on top of known campsites as best as we can because we, we want to know who is experiencing homelessness in our community so that we can help them end that homelessness. The data that we collect through point in time informs housing interventions, it informs programming, and it helps us secure HUD funding. So that is a really important function of our coordinated outreach team. Additionally, outreach providers help get the word out about cold weather contingency to people who are experiencing homelessness in our community. You can see on this slide, the winter of 2017, 2018 was a really difficult one for our community. We lost 16 people that year to cold weather-related deaths. And so as a community, we decided we needed to do better, and we came up with a cold weather contingency plan, which has been hugely successful. So again, through those efforts of coordinated outreach, kind of getting the word out to people who are on the streets that there are cold weather options available to them, we've seen a decrease. And in the last two years, we've only had one person pass away due to cold weather-related death. I wanted to also let you guys know about some exciting new outreach resources that are becoming available in our community. The Mental Health Association is working to get an outreach team off the ground. The hope is that they'll have three to four people involved in that outreach team. And a really exciting component of their outreach efforts will involve an online kind of request form for the community to access so that community members are empowered to contact outreach providers directly when they have outreach concerns. Homeless Alliance, we also have one person right now, full-time, doing outreach. She is focused in downtown Oklahoma City. And just since she's been on staff since November of 2019, she has met 45 people just in the downtown core who are experiencing homelessness. 10 of those people were experiencing what we call chronic homelessness, and many of them have already been connected to case management services and are working towards housing. We know that, sorry, yeah, thank you. So we know that in our community, camps are, are an issue. You get complaints about them because they're visible. But we also know that the way to eliminate camps in our community is through permanent housing. So outreach works. Outreach is a way to help connect individuals to those housing assets in our community. It's not a silver bullet. A lot of times, our outreach workers are making repeated contacts with people who are experiencing homelessness in order to build rapport and trust. So it's not always just a one-and-done situation, but it does work. So I wanted to share with you just some success stories. Our outreach employee through the Homeless Alliance, her very first complaint call for outreach came from Oklahoma City Public Schools. There was a family of six camping by the river, and they had been there for years. Within one week of conducting outreach, that family was connected to permanent housing and mental health services. So outreach does work. It's an alternative to calling the police. As we speak, our outreach employee is going on rounds with the homeless outreach team. So they're working together to visit sites where we've received complaints and to not just address the complaints, but to connect people to services. And then the final thing I wanted to share with you all, and we're always looking for ways to improve our collaborative efforts. Just this month, on February 7th, with Councilwoman Hammond, we convened our regular coordinated outreach team in addition to the Oklahoma City County Health Department and the Action Center to strategize ways that we can continue to improve homeless outreach in our community. And some of the takeaways for that, from that meeting, are listed here on this slide. We are committed to helping outreach providers understand better when camps are located on private property versus public property. We're, we're committed to continuing to convene with that group. And another big takeaway was making sure that we're funneling complaints through the Action Center. So again, that we have better data, that we can better define, define the issue so that we can continue to work together and collaborate to address the problem. Thank you so much for your time.
I have a quick question. So for your outreach team in the downtown area, are there specific boundaries that you would recommend, like if we hear from, or staff hears from an area and it's at this intersection, that it is or is not in the downtown area?
So we are not, we're not that rigid.
Okay, that's fair.
Our outreach provider is really well-connected to the Downtown Business Alliance meeting, so she attends all of those, you know, Automobile Alley, Brick Town, Plaza, Paseo. She's going to all of those business alliance meetings. So we are really trying to get the word out and educate the community at large about outreach resources that are available to them. You know, it is our hope that the entire city would be covered by outreach and that, you know, constituents across, your constituents across the city would have the opportunity to feel like they, they had a resource other than calling the police to address homelessness.
I appreciate the work you all are doing. I did also, you all didn't brag on yourselves in this aspect, but related to, you know, the issues of litter and all of that sort of thing, I know you all, as well as the Metro Park Neighborhood Association convened a litter day, cleanup day for the neighborhood in that area around Main and Sheridan up to 10th Street. And I think picked up like a lot of illegal dumping, tires, just a lot of like hazardous waste that was, was from illegal dumping, not necessarily from people living outside, but as well as just, just pounds and pounds of trash that the proactive work you all have done to address the concerns about the cleanliness and all of that, I think speaks to wanting to proactively solve problems rather than, than feeling like it's someone else's issue. So, and I think there's another one of those coming up soon.
There is. It's going to be focused along Linwood.
Okay, okay, great. And it's March or so?
The 7th.
Okay. So anyone who's interested in coming and helping out and putting on some gloves and doing some trash pickup, you're welcome to join us because it is actually pretty fun. You get to meet a lot of new people and it's a good time. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
City manager?
First, I also want to say thank you as well to the work that the Homeless Alliance is doing. I had received a text this morning from a constituent, actually, to Councilperson Hammond's note about trash and litter. They were talking about Penn and 39th and I-44 and Overpass in terms of just becoming kind of messy. And then when it gets windy, as it's want to do here in Oklahoma, the trash starts blowing all over. And this constituent said, you know, "I thought about requesting a trash can, but then thought who would pick it up and empty it, and would it be used for other purposes?" I'm just curious what we can do in that area. I've heard that concern before.
Right now, what we do is try to identify those areas, and if it's on a public right-of-way, we have teams that will go out and clean those up. But you know, it's like we have limited resources there as well, so we try to get out and clean those up as best we can.
Okay. What amount of frequency would we say that particular, because that's, that area?
It's really not a frequency, like we're going, you know, we're hitting every area. It's like as we get complaints and we see areas that we have needs, we go out and try to address those areas. A lot of times, it'll be a camp where they try to get the people to move on from an area where they are, and we'll do a cleanup from that as well.
So, well, and this one's not specifically an encampment there, right, at 44, like that, that underpass right there. I'm just, I don't know, kind of to Councilperson Hammond's point, like I feel, like when I respond to this constituent, I'm going to tell them, you know, of course, reach out to the, you know, the hot team, you know? But I feel like their concerns in this particular instance is more just the aesthetic, the look of that underpass. So I just don't know what we can be doing to address the, the look of that area.
Yeah, we can take a look at that. It's not really something that we've got a proactive program right now that we're just addressing. The cleanliness is kind of the mayor's point and some of the beautification and trying to have some resources there. We don't currently have a program. We address issues as they arise, but we don't currently have a program that we're dealing with that kind of issue with just litter that's in specific areas.
What would, so I've been thinking about that area quite a bit in terms of beautification and MAPS4 for sure. What can I tell the constituents right now who are concerned? Because they go on next door. I don't. I preserve my sanity. I can't do that.
Yeah. Let me, let me look at it and just get back with you.
Would you please? Thank you. I appreciate you.
I mean, in general, I guess you could, they could submit to the Action Center because then at least we would then know to send someone out because we're just, it's more reactive. But yeah, in the long term, it's, yeah, I think any prevention measures are always good.
Thank you so much. First of all, I want to give a shout out to the Bobcats in the house. Yeah, yeah, yeah. And Ms. Burton for bringing the young people to be a part of our city council meeting on today. So I hope you all have learned something in this process and, and hope to continue the conversation with you all very soon. Do have a few things here. Friends of pets, they are doing free spay and neutering right now at the Unity Baptist Church, 1701 North Nebraska Avenue. So that's for anyone living in the 73111 ZIP code. So if you have a pet and you care for your pet and you love your pet, I would suggest you get that pet spayed or neutered unless you just want them to have some babies. Why not? Also, want to commemorate the legacy of Dr. W. H. Slaughter. And I didn't mention this the last meeting, but the very first Saturday of the month, and it has continued throughout the Saturdays for Black History Month, at the W. H. Slaughter Mansion, which is owned by the Youngblood family, they have readings, and they've been doing that in the afternoons. And they have restored the mansion, and it is a beautiful place, and it's located right off of 50th and 35. And if you have not seen it, I would suggest you just drive by. And this gentleman was far ahead of his time. If you look up his history, you would know he was a very rich doctor, a Negro doctor is what they called him. And he's the reason that quite a few other physicians came to be a part of Oklahoma City. And he also owned an airport. He had his own airport and airplanes and different things like that. So I know we talk about the legacy of Greenwood District and the things that they were building up, but the same thing was happening in the Deep Deuce area that I think a lot of us don't realize, the impact and the capacity of African-Americans and their, their accomplishments there. Also, Douglas High School, want to give them a special shout out because they asked for me to come and speak to their criminal justice class for Black History Month, and they've had some phenomenal people to come and speak weekly. So I'm just honored that they asked me to be a part. And shout out to a couple of their members of their judiciary committee. They're going to be a part of the Youth in Government that's taking place with the YMCA this weekend, and this is their first time to ever be a part of Youth in Government. So we're hoping that we can get them on board for years to come, and hopefully Star Spencer, we can get you all involved in Youth in Government as well. Another thing here, I wanted to make mention of a man that was instrumental in my life that passed away on Saturday morning. His name was Dr. J. H. Tucker. He was the pastor of the Greater New Zion Baptist Church, where I had been, I have been a member at this church since I was six months old. And he was, he had been a pastor there for over 47 years before he retired. And his legacy obviously lives on. And if you know the, the big white church that sits on Kelly, right by Northeast High School, that's where Dr. J. H. Tucker was the pastor. And his legacy will, will go on forever, and he will truly be missed. And he was a man who could sing, preach and pray. And he, he was very instrumental. When my father died, he, he was there. When we've had, my family have had a lot of triumphs and also a lot of devastation, he was also there. And it was, it's very, very hard to, to talk about the passing of, of Dr. Tucker because that legacy now is gone from that church. But again, it will continue to live on through Greater New Zion Baptist Church. And I believe they're going to have the services for him on next week. So our thoughts and prayers are definitely with his family, his children, his grandchildren, and the Greater New Zion Baptist Church family as well. OKC Black Eats, as we talked about it, please make sure you get your bingo card if you haven't. It's available for you. All you got to do is go to OKCBleakeats.com. And you've still got a couple more weeks. And again, I can tell you where to go. And this Saturday, you can hang out with us at the IC Event Center and Grill from 9:00 to 10:30 for Black History Month breakfast. So we want everyone to be a part of that. And to Councilwoman Cooper, I want to And to Councilman Cooper, I want to commend you on history because you also made history, Black history for us last year, becoming the first African-American outside of Ward 7 to be elected to your seat. So, don't think you left your kids behind because I promise you, every time I encounter a young person that you've taught, they always talk about you. So, your legacy and what you've done to instill memories in those young people will continue to happen. And as you talked about, Dr. King, it made me think of King in the Wilderness, which is a documentary that I suggest everyone see. It commemorates the last 18 months of his life and it's on HBO. But it was a riveting documentary to watch to just understand his mindset, what he was going through. It also talks about him and his friends that were with him when he was in Chicago. And while he was scared, he realized when they moved into the community of the slum, they were bringing recognition to the slums and how we needed to protect those folks that lived in these spaces. And just listening and hearing the stories and understanding his impact even in Chicago, it was to the point where they were like, "Are we supposed to be here?" But then there were kids knocking on the door that same afternoon saying, "Are you really Dr. King?" And that brought onboard more people to be a part of the effort for what he was trying to do in that era and at that time. And as we talk about even the voting, I'm reminded of the Organic Act of 1890, which was passed in Oklahoma a year after our land run. And that established for different counties within Oklahoma to have representation for Oklahoma Territory Legislature. And that's what brought about our very first African-American to be elected to the Oklahoma Territorial House of Representatives, Green Curran. And because of him, he was the one who passed, hoped to pass a bill to House Bill 119, if I'm not mistaken, is the number of it, because of a racial incident that happened in King Fisher County. So, he was the first to represent King Fisher County and the state of Oklahoma. And he did not run again after that. And after statehood is when A.C. Hamlin became a representative in 1908, that next year. But because of the grandfather clause, he was unable to run again. And in 1915, there was the Gin vs. United States case, which happened in Oklahoma, and it went all the way to the Supreme Court to basically say that it was unjust for African-Americans to not have the right to vote. And that next year, in 1916, is when the Oklahoma Legislature passed something else to prevent African-Americans from the right to vote. But that was also challenged in 1934 by former Mayor I.W. Lane of Redbird County. He was the mayor, former mayor of Redbird, which is an all-black town, and Wagner County, excuse me. So, he challenged that and they were able to strike that down. So, we also go back to, as we look at the literacy test, we also look at the Jim Crow laws. Oklahoma instilled their first Jim Crow law in 1903. We also had a Jim Crow law in 1907. We also had our last Jim Crow law in the 1930s. So, it didn't stop for us. But I'd say that to say it took many, many years after A.C. Hamlin. We didn't get our next representative in the state of Oklahoma until E. Melvin Porter was elected in the 60s. So, that's a part of Black history, but also in the 60s is when Ward 7 received their first African-Americans to obtain these seats. So, the first appointed again was Dr. Charles Atkins, the first elected, Dr. A.L. Dow. And I want to read the names of others who have came before in this seat. Reverend Gory James, Mr. Ben Tipton, Ms. Willa Johnson, Mr. Skip Kelly, John Pettis Jr., and some of our appointed for this seat have been Reverend Lee Cooper Jr., Dr. Byron Bisco, and Mr. Delbert Burnett. So, those are all of those who have held this space for Ward 7, and I think it's very important to speak their history and their commitments to their communities within Oklahoma City. And as I speak about that, I'll leave with this. Oh, I want to commemorate Paul Moore Day too, because with his monuments being housed in Ward 7, his commitment. And I would say, if you have not seen it, any of his exhibit, get on that water taxi and just ride it, or head on over to the National Cowboy Hall of Fame, Western Heritage Museum. We call it Cowboy Hall of Fame still. But head on over there and see some of his other smaller pieces that he has that are on display there. And again, I'll leave with this. It's been six months since we have heard of a promise of a grocery store from individuals in the community who closed their previous store. It's been six months since that announcement and we're well over 100 days since that promise of, that 90-day promise to the community. And I will say, as they continue to say that they're going to open that store, there have been some issues with permits, as I guess they assume that you can just build and do whatever you want to and not have to have a permit to do so. And I think that's very unfortunate for our community when the community is at a loss right now and we still have people who say they are wanting to do things in the community. And obviously, we're still waiting on those promises that continue to be broken towards the community. But we are continuing to provide those rides to the people who need them. Unfortunately, this is where we are when it comes to our community. But again, I continue to ask people to go to Northeast Oklahoma City. I continue to ask you all to shop at the Sunshine Market to see what the community has been subjected to right now with the closing of that store. I also suggest that you, after that, go to those small box discount stores to see how many trips people have to take in order for them to truly fulfill their grocery list, in order to get their needs met for their families and for the communities. So, it's very unfortunate and it's a loss for our community, but we are, we are ready for the positive things that are coming to the community as well. And we're going to continue to work hard to ensure that we get what's best for the community and work towards even a community-owned grocery store. That's something that we're also working towards and working through those efforts as well. So, those are things I wanted to ensure that I mentioned for this month and also again, commemorate the legacy of those who have came before in this seat for Black History. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, that concludes items from Council. City Manager reports?
Yes, so we have the budget transfers report. It's just a report we give an update to the Council on any transfers between budget categories or departments that are made. So, that is in your packet. The February Sales and Use Tax Collections Report is in here also. We talked a little bit about it with Russell at the workshop, the projections that we had on the budget information that we provided to you included the February sales tax. It was a good check, sales and use tax check was a good check. It brought us back to where we're just barely above target combined for sales and use tax. Sales tax a little below target, use tax a little bit above target. But we are expecting right now with just information we received from Russell to see that sales tax continue to slow going into the end of the year and then into next fiscal year. And so, that's what we're working on our budget now to make adjustments to fit within the resources that we have. So, we'll continue to update the Council if we have information.
Okay.
So, ahead.
All right, thank you. That concludes City Manager reports. Now, we head to item 12, Citizens to Be Heard. We have three who have signed up to speak. We'll start with Greg Brown. Okay. If you'd state your name and address and keep your remarks to three minutes or less.
My name is Alaric Overby. I'm a new resident here in Oklahoma City. My address is 611 Oath University in Edmond. I'm briefly just speaking about, just kind of curious on being new to the city. And speaking in regards to some of the issues in regards to the current grocery store that was planned to be an open, one of my issues has been that there's been a lack of support for any grocery store that has any objective of coming out and basically supplying healthy produce for a community that doesn't have a grocery store, period. So, what I've seen as far as both going to media, both in social media, is just a lack of support for a grocery store that people might have a personal problem with. For personal reasons, they choose not to support a grocery store in relation to what's going on right now as opposed to what a grocery store might be going out there later. So, for me, it's looking at just the whole issue of there's not a current full-scale grocery store there now. And if you have any business that's willing to come out there and put a full-scale grocery store, that those people in the community, the constituents, the city council would make some effort in order to support that. And for me, I haven't seen that. I also have a company that partnered up with a grocery store to actually bring in fresh produce. I have a vertical farming company. So, the objective has been to basically set up a vertical farm inside of a grocery store in the northeast side that will provide those people in that community with healthy produce that they wouldn't get from either a Whole Foods, a Sprouts, or a Homeland. And that's being able to raise the quality of that. And so, those are some of the things where in, inside the media, when you see things being talked about it, those are the things that aren't being highlighted. Those are the things that aren't being talked about. Only thing, you hear the same kind of rhetoric about, you know, how somebody or how different people dislike or have a problem with the grocery store as opposed to what are those benefits that this grocery store could come and bring to the community if it had the same support. And so, that was the only thing that I wanted to say, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Michael Washington?
Elegantly said, stated, young man. Now then, it's not about who I like, it's not about who my friend is, it's not about whether I approve of you eating today. What it all boils down to then, my friend in this horseshoe arena here, is it comes down to the thousands of people who are hungry today, who live on the northeast quadrant of Oklahoma City, of which I am a resident proudly to speak, by the way. And I for one would not tolerate or allow any person to stand in the way of feeding my kids, my friends, my next-door neighbor, or anybody else who may live in that vicinity within my voice and range. Now then, it doesn't matter about who wants to open a grocery store, it matters about who going to be fed. It doesn't matter about do I like you or not, it's a matter that I am representative of my whole community over here. Now then, okay, we say it's an issue with a permit. Well, these people have been in business long enough to know that a permit is necessary. So, I want to know, is it just a permit or is there somebody in the back scenes in the back door clearly preventing them from hooking up links to make sure that this project works? Now then, this person here, let me tell you one thing, I will not bring up their names for the most part in out of respect for that, but let me tell you, these same people closed this store down on Northeast 23rd and Mount Luther King, August of last year. Quite naturally, I was one of the ones furious and made my point clear in the media, social media if you'll have it. Now, however, but if they want to make amends now and say, "Look here, we want to come back in because we realized a mistake we made," which they openly stated, we should be embracing these people. Now, a permit? So, that's telling me then that you had a store open previously before? What is the real thing here then? You're building up the store, this Homeland, excuse me, this high upland store in the 36th Street District of Kelly. You're fixing it up, putting the billboards on the outside, going in and straightening, but now it doesn't make sense that you would don't have a permit. Something wrong with that picture. Now, but then when you have a representative of the northeast side of Oklahoma City, we should not be criticizing those who want to put a business in our sector? We should be saying, "What can we do to help you?" I can't get mad at you because you closed down a store and didn't clean up a landfill that is treacherously unhealthy and unsafe for the environment of people on the northeast side? But let me tell y'all one thing, we need this point made clear. We need to let everybody know that more than 30,000 people are hungry. We don't need somebody telling them, "Let me ride you to Midwest City to pick your groceries up." And we certainly don't need to go down to that Sunshine Grocery Store. Let me tell y'all something right quick and I'm ending. I'm the one that made them people, I said, "Look here, y'all need to take that 10% off of this madness and this garbage that y'all got down here." So, yes, you definitely spoke right about that. And guess what else too? We getting ready to try to shut that down. "Oh, that's going to hurt everybody, isn't it?" No, it's going to make them people get up and really do the sunshine that they really been missing on. We're going to put some light on that damn moment there. In closing, City Councilwoman Nice, it is important that you reach out to these people. And if that needs to be a mediator to come in between you, I will gladly assume that responsibility. Thank y'all very much.
Clearly, we don't need a mediator, and I want to reemphasize the fact that we don't have a problem with anybody bringing a business into the community, but let's do it correctly and with the community in mind. And unfortunately, that's what they have not been able to do despite what others have said. And again, if you want to bring something into any community, you have to do it the right way. That also means you have to have permits for any business or for any home in order for you to have a viable structure for others to be safe. So, safety is my concern for the community. So, until they have those permits, and yes, they have had a business, we appreciate them for that and, you know, thank you for bringing the same stuff back. Thank you. But as we work towards whatever they're trying to do, we still don't have it. So, again, we don't need a mediator for that. That's all they need to do since they've been in business for so long, is fulfill their promise to the community. So, we appreciate them for wanting to do that in order for us to move this community forward. Thank you very much.
All right, last person is Greg Brown.
Hello, everyone. I'm coming as a concerned citizen. I've been living in and out of the northeast quadrant all my entire life. Went off certain military, come back and set up residence, raised my family, the whole nine yards. This grocery store issue is ludicrous. I mean, there is no reason that it should be this way. And for a permit? Now, I was there shortly after the official come gladly smiling, slapped the sticker on the door of the store. Now, we talking about a store that left six months ago. How out of balance can this possibly be to shut the project down completely? Doesn't make sense to me, doesn't make sense to anybody. And I'm tired of the clique-ish of the leadership in the community that's been going on for years. It didn't just start. But as a citizen, I'm tired of it, the corporate control, tired of that. And if anybody wants to come in to benefit my community, everybody should welcome them and guide them to take care of what needs to be taken care of, not push it to the side and wait on Homeland or everybody that will benefit each, you know, the conglomeration. So, I'm not good at speaking, but that's all I have to say.
All right, we are moving into executive session and we will be back.